Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak, sir? Come to the podium, please. State your name.
My name is Stephen Payne. I reside at 1002 South Wind Circle. I'm directly across the street from this parcel that's subject to this rezoning action. I'm speaking in opposition of the rezoning action. There is no need, as the previous speaker said, to have a commercial venture in this area. Everything is residential, has been residential. A brand-new, beautiful, beautiful home was built on the parcels adjacent to this home. It's my understanding that they want to put in some sort of storage facility, boat or RV storage. After over thirty years in law enforcement, it's my experience that that type of business just draws in nothing but problems. Granted, it provides a service, but the thieves looking for what can I find inside an RV? What can I find inside a boat? It's just too darned close to residential area and houses mine. I look right across the street from it. Now, the, I assume, property owners have put up two signs out on the front of this property, thinking it's the future home of a pig farm. I don't know if that's their way of snubbing their noses at this process or what exactly the intent of their signage is, but there are two brand-new signs that conically state that this is the future home of the Lyman Pig Farm. Well, we obviously don't need a pig farm. We don't need a storage facility on what is a strictly, totally surrounded residential area. It's just uncalled for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else come to the podium? You come all out and be silent.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amanda Gutmaker, and I reside at 1041 South Wind Circle in Danridge, directly across the street from this property in question. I'm also a local real estate agent, and I'm in opposition of this. In agreement with everyone else that is previous to my statement, I completely agree. Not here to beat a dead horse. I am in agreement of everything that they noted. And as a realtor in this local community, I do not think that for a residential piece of property that this is a good endeavor. It does bring on things that we will not want, and it will lower values overall. Again, in opposition, in an agreement of the previous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. State your name.
My name's Anthony Ward. I'm prepared just a brief statement here. My family, I reside at 863 Highway 139, which is the property directly beside this, the property in question. My family actually disowned this property with restrictions in place. It's lots four and five of the Freddie Bradsville Estate, and I'm here to firmly oppose the zoning change for this property. We purchased our property and built our home based on the assurance of peaceful residential environment, protected by both the existing zoning as well as the restrictive covenants that are in place. I have a copy of those here with me as well. That's what's governing the neighborhood currently. This location was selected for its quiet nature, proximity to the lake, the clear expectation that surrounding properties would remain residential, preserving both the value and the atmosphere of our home that we built. The property rezoning threatens these protections and reduces multiple negative impacts. Number one, property values. Altering the zoning would likely decrease the value of nearby homes, including my own, as potential buyers rely on residential zoning and the stability that it provides. Noise. This gentleman in law enforcement mentioned, you know, the things that come with a commercial establishment, especially with storage facilities. Any future development allowed under rezoning could increase noise levels, disrupting the calm environment that defines this entire community. Traffic. Rezoning could lead to higher traffic volumes on roads not designed to accommodate commercial or higher-density use, creating hazards for residents. Eight sixty, I mean, Highway 139 right there, my address, at eight sixty-three, they fly by now. It's already got on my driveway. Can you imagine having a storage facility or something there, right there before you get to that curb? Be dangerous. Safety. Increase traffic, unfamiliar visitors, and commercial activity could compromise the safety of neighborhood streets and outdoor spaces. Excuse me. On a personal note, my son Jace is autistic. While high-functioning, he suffers from extreme social anxiety and is stressed from environmental changes. Stability, low noise, and unfamiliar interactions with people are essential for his well-being. That's why we chose this property and built the house where we built it. This rezoning directly threatens the environment we rely on to ensure Jace's safety and comfort. Even with the restrictive covenants still limit this use of this property as residential only, rezoning it undermines the neighborhood's character, stability, and protective framework. It sets a precedent that allows gradual erosion of the conditions residents rely upon when they initially invested in this community, in this area. I respectfully but firmly request that the board deny the proposed change for lots four and five of the Freddie Bradsville Estates. Preserving the current residential zoning will protect property values, neighborhood safety, quiet enjoyment, and the overall quality of life for all the affected homeowners in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? May I have you come up also? Try to expedite here, because we've got forty-five minutes to go.
My name is Tom Brudisky. I reside at 1840 Boulder Crest Drive, which the property that you're looking at rezoning is on the cove where I live. That's right at the end of the cove. And the other objection that I have to it is it's lakefront property. I mean, there's only so much lakefront property on the lake, and it should be residential like everything else is around there. And once it is zoned commercial, it can become anything commercial on there rather than just a storage unit. And I agree with everything that everybody else said. And the other thing is, it's a residential area. At night, it's quiet. It's, everybody has, you know, their porch lights and turns things out. But when you're looking at a storage facility, you're looking at a lot more light. It's going to be a brighter area. You're lighting up the neighborhood rather than having a peaceful place on the lake. Now you have, you know, floodlights, people wandering in and out. And when it's a storage facility, it's not restricted to any certain times of the day. Somebody wants to come in there and get their boat out. Well, they're coming in at two o'clock in the morning. Lights are going on, and you're waking up neighbors wondering what's going on in your neighborhood. And, you know, so it's a lot of things you gotta look at rather than just, you know, putting the building up and putting some storage stuff in it. It's a twenty-four-hour building for anybody that wants to go in and out of it. So I'm totally against it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Andrea Robertson, 1809 Ridge Crest Drive. I oppose the rezoning. I really just wanted that on the record. I just bought my property June thirtieth, and the reason I bought my property where I did is because of the current community and just the beauty. And I'm just a little surprised that this is even happening right now. So I just wanted it on the record that I completely oppose it. Thank you.
Anyone else before this hearing to the closure? Not hearing anyone else? This hearing is closed. Next, Resolution 2025-51, a resolution amending the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee by rezoning property from A1 AgriCoast or Forest Street to C2 General Commercial, Old Highway East, Rocktown Road, Jefferson City, Land Zero One Five, a portion of zero three seven point zero zero three acres. Is anyone here to speak to this resolution? Not hearing any? That will end this hearing. Next, commissioners, we have approval and correction to the agenda. These two resolutions, by mistake, in your, in our list tonight, we need to move these two resolutions to new business. Does anyone oppose? Sure.
We move the appearance of citizens up in front of the consent agenda?
Can we move it up? It's coming up real quick.
Before the election of office?
Before the election of officers?
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the commission? I can't just move it? Show of hands, you want to move it? We got five people wants to move it. I'll take it to the rest of them so we can stay right where it's at.
Do we have a roll call on that, Mr. Chairman, please?
Sure.
For clarification, we're looking to move the citizens up so that they can speak before we do the election on that office, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
You say you're up? Ten yes, nine noes, fails for lack of a letter. State where it's at. Is there anything else that needs to be added to the agenda outside of these other two resolutions? Mr. Brady, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like for us to be able to hear from David Seal this evening on an update of what's going on with him in preparation to going to Capitol. And also, I'd like to ask the commission to please allow him also to touch base, probably, at the Capitol on the bill or the resolution that we sent to help keep in place the property tax benefit for veterans and our elderly citizens.
If it's all right with the commission, I'll let him have my time to speak. If the chairman's, does anyone want to oppose? So be it. Motion to approve the agenda as changed. Seventeen yes, two noes. Passes. Agenda has been adjusted. Now we have election of officers, District Eight, County Commissioner. Floor is now open for nominations. Ms. Prarik Owen?
I nominate W. D. Henry.
W. D. Henry? Floor is still open for nominations. Sir?
Jim Fox.
Jim Fox. The two names are W. D. Henry and Jim Fox.
Mr. Chairman, I move to cease nominations.
Accepted. We will do a roll call. As your name is called, you either say Henry or Fox. Henry or Fox. Were you ready, sir?
Katie Hethler. Janet Norton.
Fox.
Joe Coleman.
I'd like to speak on that just then. I have had conversation on both sides of this. I went through this a few years ago. I was running for the office.
Can't hear you, Joe. Speak into the microphone.
I ran into this controversy myself a few years ago. I was running for this office in District Two, and somebody else replaced another man in this very same way. And I heard the word spoken tonight, patience. The Bible says patience is a virtue, and virtue is from the Lord. I believe sometimes we need to be patient, wait just a little bit. So that's what I decided to do at that time. I decided to wait till the election and vote for the best man that I thought would do the job, the man that was honest, the man that held on to his integrity as the president. So this, who I would like to see use patience in this tonight. So on that ground, I won't get in if I'm going to run again. I've heard it said that somebody's spreading the word that I'm not going to run again. But I'm going to run again, being the Lord's will and the church not rise. If the church rises, I'll be gone. But let me tell you something tonight. It's very important that we wait this thing out until the election, if you want to do it right. I'm not going to have any party that's going to be right. So I'm going to stand for this tonight.
Sir, that's stated. So the next one?
Jimmy Del Patterson.
Uh, Fox.
Austin Brooks.
Fox.
Tim Snodgrass.
Fox.
Greg Byrd.
Henry.
John Johnson.
Henry.
Tim Seals.
Henry.
Sammy Solomon.
Henry.
Rob Levens.
Fox.
Ransom Douglas.
Fox.
Randy Bales.
Henry.
Aaron Lloyd.
Henry.
Ronnie Coleman.
Henry.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Henry.
A.J. Walker.
Henry.
Marcus Reed.
Fox.
Howdy Comas.
Fox.
We have a vote of ten to eight. We do not make the eleven votes required. We can either re-vote now or hold this vote to the end of the meeting. What's the pleasure? You want to vote again? Andrew D. Harris, say. Count now eleven. One candidate has to give to eleven to win the election. We will vote again?
End of the vote.
Can I say something? Are we about to vote now?
Sure.
I want to say, I appreciate all the calls, because I have gotten several calls and supported Jim Fox. And everybody that I talk to, I explain to them why I'm voting for W. D. Henry. And I want to say that Terry Docree, even in his illness, he is still faithfully serving his community, because he could have not resigned. He could have just drawn a check. And he could have let us sit up here by ourselves, but that's not what he did. He gave us a name that he would like to see fill the end of his fourth term. This term is almost over, and I think this will make eight will have lots and lots of choices to choose from during the election cycle. And I respect Terry Docree. He has been a very good resource for me. He is a wonderful, wonderful representative of his community. And I just want to let you know that while I'm supporting W. D. Henry, I respect for Terry, and I'll, just want to.
Anyone else want to comment before we vote again? Not hearing any, we proceed to vote?
Katie Hethler. Janet Norton.
Fox.
Joe Coleman.
I'm turning.
Jimmy Del Patterson.
Fox.
Austin Brooks.
Fox.
Tim Snodgrass.
Fox.
Greg Byrd.
Henry.
John Johnson.
Henry.
Tim Seals.
Henry.
Sammy Solomon.
Henry.
Robert Levens.
Fox.
Ransom Douglas.
Fox.
Randy Bales.
Henry.
Aaron Lloyd.
Henry.
Ronnie Coleman.
Henry.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Henry.
A.J. Walker.
Henry.
Marcus Reed.
Fox.
Howdy Comas.
Fox.
Apparently, you're seeing that eight, with Henry getting ten and Jim Fox getting eight. What's the pleasure?
I guess we'll let them talk first. They did it last.
We want to do this very last slate one more time. We will move right on down. Approval in minutes. We got nineteen yes, we got noes. Minutes passed. Next, we have appearance of citizens. This is going to be rather lengthy. My calculation, about forty-five to fifty minutes. Every one who speaks, three minutes. So I'm going to call a name up, and I want the next person to be on the deck. Please, let's try not to be repetitious. Let's try to be effective with the time. First speaker will be Kessley Tucker. Next one will be Jason Martin.
I'm Kessley Tucker of eight forty-seven Lake Shore Drive, Danridge, and I'm here to speak on a couple of things. One is the short-term rental resolution proposed that we've been working on since last winter, I believe. I'm not sure why this did not go back to committee after it was cut down by the attorneys in the state before. It should have gone back to them. I don't know why it's in front of full commission, and I don't feel like that we were given ample notice at all. I found out today about three hours before this meeting that it was on tonight's agenda, because it was on last month, and then it was pulled. There are several things all throughout this resolution proposal that are still riddled with all kinds of issues that infringe upon public, our property rights, which I'm a huge property rights person. Probably most of you all in here know that I'm a real estate broker and own a real estate firm here in Danridge, and I have been that for twenty years. So I have lived in Jefferson County since nineteen seventy-three. I have seen the growth of this county. I've seen the changes of this county. And right now, the amount of revenue that's being brought into this county through short-term rentals and through the tourism itself is very extensive. I don't think that you all or the citizens understand that this permitting process is not going to bring more funds into the county. It's going to cost the county money. The people that you all are trying to get money from are already paying. The hotel, motel taxes are already being paid. Most people use some form of booking site. They're collecting those through booking sites. They're being remitted straight to Frank's office. So hotel, motel taxes being paid, sales taxes also being remitted to the state of Tennessee that then goes out to the county and cities in the same manner. But this is the most restrictive ordinance in our surrounding areas, the absolute most restrictive. It is also the most cumbersome to obtain, and it's also the most costly. Right now, Pigeon Forge has not even enacted theirs, because it's impossible to do. Gatlinburg City, right now, they are two years behind on just getting the inspections done for people who have applied. They just keep telling them, just pay the fee. They can't even get the inspections done. How are we going to get inspections done, for one thing? So that's going to be a problem. Getting the paperwork done, Frank already said he's going to have to have an additional employee in his office. Whoever's going to be doing these permits or following up, that hired person also? That person's going to need a vehicle. Has anybody on the commission or in the committee run a cost analysis of what it's going to cost the county to implement this permit, the way that it's written? I don't think you have, because if you do, you would find out it's going to cost this county hundreds of thousands of dollars per year in excess of what it's bringing in. We will be working out of a deficit, which leads me to the next talking point. We already have that going on over at the landfill. We're in a huge problem. This problem's been going on way too long. We need to shred our guys. We need to start grinding the trash. It's not just a county problem. It's also a dangerous city problem. And some of our commissioners live inside the city of Danridge. We have a major problem. So some of the things that are in this, going back to the ordinance, some of the things that are, I wasn't prepared to nod at all, because I didn't know this was happening.
Right in your time zone.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for speaking. Next, Mr. Jason Martin.
Jason Martin, eight four seven, Lake Shore Drive, Danridge. I'm here, two things. It's my turn around. We've looked over it extensively. We've been to the commission meetings. Again, I'm really shocked that it didn't go back to commission, as I think you guys had suggested. So I was kind of really surprised to see that it made its way back here in a slightly different form. Very cumbersome, as it's been said. I think this would really hurt financially, more so than gains, Kessley said. So I won't beat a devil's there. Also, I want to speak on the shredder. We own a little business, and we're shipping all our stuff to Hamlin County. And little company like me, we're spending three to seven thousand dollars a month that could be coming here in Jefferson County. So, guys, we appreciate what you guys are doing and getting it done. So we want to apologize, guys, and let's get this shredded.
Next, we have Gail Barzanigan. Ma'am, I have you in here twice. You'll only get to speak once. On deck will be Anthony Ward.
My name is Gail Weaver Barzanigan, and I live at twenty-five thirty-five Edgewater Lane in Danridge. And I was to speak on two issues that I put in, but in the interest of time and the fact that you're going to be here all night, I was to shorten it and tell you a couple of items that I'd like to discuss. One of them is the short-term rental. And I hand it out to everyone, a piece of paper. If you didn't get it, I'll get you one. I've got extras. So in order not to spend all our time on this, I just want to say that a majority of you should approve a resolution on STRs. That's true. But we need to propose a shorter, less complex version. The present version is a composite of several different cities and is therefore much too difficult to grasp and enforce. And so I left some items that I thought would be interesting to put in a more simple STR. Also, just quickly, I wanted to say a word about the shredder. I am very pleased that you have already approved to purchase a shredder for this county. I want to commend you for that. We definitely... We definitely don't need to be dependent on another county to dispose of our waste. That just doesn't make sense. That's just too costly. I am pleased that, let me see here, I'm having to change everything because you just approved this. Basically, what I want to say is I have the greatest respect for the skills and knowledge of Director Large. When he says that purchasing a shredder for Jefferson County is a need, not a want, I believe his analysis. And now I know you do also. So I want to thank you for going to be in the best interest of our county by purchasing the shredder. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anthony Ward.
I think you said I was on deck next. I've already spoke about the zoning. I'm going to stick again.
Your rest. Stephen Hayne. Stephen Hayne, have you already spoke?
He left.
He left?
I think he did.
He's done. James Lance. Next, we have Ron Zugey.
Zugey. Good evening, Jefferson County Commissioners. My name is James Lance. I'm a twenty-seven-year veteran of the US Armed Forces, residing at twenty-two forty-six Enniskillah Drive, Jefferson City, Tennessee. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Dogwood Acres. I want to address the commission tonight on three issues. First, once again, I request the commission approve the short-term rental resolution. I'd also like to commend our county attorney for his clarification regarding this resolution. The fees garnered from that new resolution will be used to hire an enforcement manager who will ensure approximately a thousand short-term rental owners comply with hotel motel and sales taxes. This combined with the increased short-term rental property tax rate will add another viable source of operating revenue to the county coffers. Additionally, this resolution will ensure compliance with all applicable safety and health regulations. With regard to the first point again, this commission should not be cowed by anyone's threat of litigation. Secondly, I request the commission support Mr. Jim Fox's nomination due for the Baden Eighth County seat, Eighth District County Commission seat. During the previous two years of working with him on several Jefferson County concernses and issues, I can unequivocally state he possesses the integrity, sound character, devoid of any adverse background, not even a speeding ticket in the last thirty years, and a work ethic to succeed as next Eighth District Commissioner. His near-perfect attendance record at county commission meetings demonstrates his dedication to help our county prosper. Finally, I request this commission allocate funding to purchase a Class III IV shredder, which already been discussed in the budget meeting, for the county landfill. I thank the county landfill manager, Mr. Eric, for scheduling the four October twenty-five demonstration along with the numerous citizens and the two county commissioners that attended that event on that date. This capability will pay for itself in approximately three years and will extend our county's landfill life cycle by some estimate up to eighty years. In summation, I request the commission approve the short-term rental resolution, extol Mr. Jim Fox as the next Eighth District County Commissioner, and allocate funding to purchase a Class III IV shredder for the county landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ron Zugey.
Yeah, I had a big speech here, but I think the way it's fallen out. My name's Ron Zugey. I live in one one two nine Blazer Point. I'm in District Eight. Ever since we had our sheds issue, which I feel sorry for the people on one thirty-nine because the way the council handles this stuff, I don't think it's going to be good. But all this went through. I got involved in this. I have seen one person out there fighting for our district. I don't understand how, I know that Mr. Dockery, we voted for him. I voted for him. And I'm sure he's the greatest person. He did a good job. You should honor him. But we are District Eight. You should consider us. We're the people who have to deal with this. You're going to appoint a buddy or a friend or out of respect for somebody and not consider the residents at all. Mr. Dockery is no longer with us in this, as a councilman. But we're here. The records I see here, we've got a person who has a terrible record and he swears it's dirty politics to talk about his record. I'm sorry, he made that record. That is, there's nothing political or dirty about it. Consider District Eight. This is who we're replacing, to replace Mr. Dockery. We want a good person and, you know, what else can I say? That's the way we feel about it. Think about the citizens first, not replacing somebody out of kindness. We had a presidential election. They did the same thing for, and look at how that works out. So that's about all I got to say.
Thanks, sir. Kim Starr.
Kim Starr, one eight one five, Bridge, Chris Rock. I am here in support of Jim Fox. Ron just took a lot of what I was going to say, only in the fact that commissioners are supposed to be for the people, not appointed by another commissioner. So I think it's important for you to listen to the number of people speaking tonight in support of Mr. Fox. I could go into his credentials. Other people have pages of it. We all are here wanting, you know, to keep the time down. So I just want you to know, I am in support of Jim Fox.
Thank you, ma'am. Jennifer Mertz.
Mertes.
Mertes.
Jennifer Mertes, nine eighty-four O'Hara Drive, Dandridge. I've lived in Dandridge for eight years. I'll tell you right now, I've moved over forty-three times in my life. I've lived in nine states. I'm former military. Could you guess that? All right. Guys, I love Dandridge. I love this place as much as everybody else in this room does. And there is this wonderful aspect of the people here that we want to keep, you know, furthering everything that we have here. I've lived in Dandridge for eight years. I was a National Director of Public Relations for ADT and have worked side by side with hundreds of county commissioners to help develop and improve, you know, communities, the improvements, developments, knowledge, what our constituents want. I'm a little nervous. I don't know why. Maybe it's because it means so much to us. Through my experience, I have seen those who care and respect for the important positions of county commissioners and those who are just there along for the ride. We all gathered here tonight to show our support for Jim Fox, who has shown us his compassion and his knowledge of the residents here in our beloved Dandridge. His vast knowledge of what is important to us, the people. And we know that he will be a valuable asset for this commission. I respectfully ask that you listen to all of us, change your votes over to Fox, and vote for Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda McSmith. Next is will be Steve.
He was holding me up. Linda McSmith, thirty-seven sixty-six Island View, on the south side of the lake, District Eight. As indicated previously, Jim attends the commission meetings. He's actively involved, frequently speaks about the issues and gives input. He also attends committee meetings, speaks about things, and is always there to offer his assistance on any of the actions that need to be taken. He is active in the community and he's indicated a dedication to this community. The commission is divided on this issue. We all understand that. But we need to look at what is best for the county. I've been very interactive with Terry throughout the years when we learned about what was happening here in Jefferson County and what kind of things needed to be done. I've talked to Terry, and yes, he's disappointed that I am supporting Jim Fox. But I'm going to step up and give what I believe is the recommendation for the best person to represent District Eight. We have a lot of things that go on over there because nobody really knows because you guys are all on the other side of the lake. You know, we're that stepchild over there. I could say redheaded stepchild. But the bottom line is, we need somebody who's invested in the area, who knows us, who has been up to date on what's been going on and in front of commission. So that's why I am supporting him. Short-term rentals, I support the short-term rentals. Property owners have rights both to own and rent their property for short-term rental as well as individuals who don't do that. They are setting up a business. And part of being part of a business, you have different things that you need to do to be in compliance. Some of it's licensing, some of it's different areas that you have to contend with. This is not that much of a burden if they want to run a business. So please support the short-term rental resolution this evening. I also support the shredder. And I still have time left for once in how many times have I spoken through the years? So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Steve. On deck, we have Kathleen Villers.
I'm Stephen McSmith, three seven six six Island View Road, Parish Chapel Community in District Eight. When I was in high school, I'm sure it was the same for many of you, we did fun things like vote for the class president, the prom king and queen, student council members, all that good fun stuff. And it was harmless and it was fun and it was nothing more than popularity contests. As we grow older and go our different paths in life, that popularity business morphs into something sometimes, especially in government, that appears to the guys as smacking of cronyism. That's not a nice word, cronyism. Whether it's intentional or simply unrecognized or simply the way, that's the way things have always been done, it is what it is when people are watching and making up their minds as to who they would like to be representing them. I'm looking for someone who is capable, motivated, and willing to work hard. And if I've seen that person in action for a period of time, that's the person I want to represent me. I think we need to find a better, more representative, more efficient way to get people for short-term interim filling of seats on this commission. Just saying that's the way it's always been done doesn't mean much of anything to me. It's meaningless. We need to look at things that are relevant, that are meaningful, and go that direction. That's what we need to do. This commission has been afraid of change with all kinds of things in the eight years that I've been here politically. That's something that needs to change. When we left the previous month's meeting, one of the seated commission members said out as loudly in a loud voice as he could, referring to Terry Dockery's designee. He's a good man. He comes from a good family. That's great. But what does that have to do with serving the people? I'm sure the five people currently that will be running for that position in the primary are all good people. And I'm sure they all come from good families. Compromise needs to be in your vocabulary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kathleen Villers and Bill, your next.
Kathleen Villers, twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, speaking for myself and District Eight citizens on the interim commissioner appointment. Two individuals have been nominated, Mr. Fox and Mr. Henry, nominated by the former Commissioner Dockery. We strongly and respectfully recommend Mr. Fox. Over the past three years, Mr. Fox has dedicated over an estimated six hundred hours, six hundred hours to this county on matters, attending more than a hundred meetings on issues like short-term rentals, battery storage, the sheds, the elementary school, and more, communicating extensively with county officials and citizens. And again, that totals an estimated six hundred hours of time that Mr. Fox, as a citizen, as a citizen I might add, devoted. Time freely given because Mr. Fox truly cares about this county and the citizens. Mr. Fox shows up. He's current on issues. He has commitment, knowledge, integrity that reflect the public spirit that District Eight and this county deserve. In contrast, it appears Mr. Henry has shown minimal recent county engagement. When Mr. Henry was asked about some current county issues by others, he did not appear as familiar. In fact, many times unable to comment much, if any. Mr. Henry's past record as commissioner, his attendance record, is also concerning. He missed thirty-eight meetings over forty-two months from two thousand six to two thousand ten, attending only fifty percent. Why didn't Mr. Henry, early on, after a few months of high absences, exercise the judgment to step down when he realized he could not serve District Eight? Mr. Henry staying in office was unlike Commissioner Dockery, who exhibited good judgment and unselfishly just stepped down recently when he realized he was unable to serve effectively. Turning our attention to the September fifteenth meeting, both candidates spoke for several minutes. I am not accusing anyone of wrongdoing, but did you listen carefully to what was said? We urge careful attention to their remarks in consideration of what Tennessee state codes permit. After thorough review, Mr. Henry is just not the strongest nominee. We respect and know a former Commissioner Dockery and pray for his well-being, but it seems out of character for him to recommend Mr. Henry, given our findings. We respectfully urge the commission to appoint the stronger candidate, Mr. Fox. In conclusion, objective, fact-based decisions, not emotional or relational ones, will best serve our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
I'm Bill Villers at twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive. I'm speaking for residents and myself. I'm sorry?
Mike.
Mike? It's not working?
No.
Oh, there I go. Hopefully you caught all that stuff. I'm speaking for residents and myself about the District Eight interim commission appointment and short-term rentals. We elect commissioners to serve with fairness, integrity, and commitment to the community free from personal agendas and outside influences that can compromise sound, lasting decisions, and create even new problems for the county. We respectfully urge the commission to make a fact-based, objective choice. This appointment is effectively hiring of a senior county official, typically chosen by District Eight voters, but now being decided by commissioners, almost all of whom are not in District Eight. We've reviewed both nominees' backgrounds and encouraged the commission to do the same. Each spoke at the September meeting. While no legal wrongdoing is alleged, we recommend reviewing Tennessee Codes thirty-nine sixteen one oh two and two nineteen one twenty-one and listening to the meeting recording if either nominee's remarks were unclear. Artificial intelligence has confirmed with us that certain statements may warrant legal review. But regardless of any legal opinion, public interpretation of the remarks and certain statutes could prompt harmful online allegations, depending on your vote. The two nominees are Mr. Jim Fox and Mr. W.D. Henry, who was recommended by former Commissioner Dockery. We strongly recommend Mr. Jim Fox. For three years, he has voluntarily attended most Jefferson County meetings, engaged with District Eight residents and county officials, researched solutions- District Eight residents and county officials, researched solutions and proposed improvements. His sustained commitment and early campaign launch reflect genuine intent to serve. Mr. Fox has proactively shown the behavior, integrity, dedication, and public spirit District Eight deserves. This recommendation does not disrespect Mr. Dockery, as we deeply appreciate his roughly 15 years of service. His leadership and responsiveness, which I can personally attest to, will be missed, and we honor his legacy by advocating for continued strong representation. As a retired executive officer of an international top 100 company to work for in America, with decades of hiring experience across many job roles, including manager and director, we believe Mr. Fox embodies the qualities essential for success in this role. After careful review, Mr. Henry did not emerge as the strongest nominee, though he's a very nice individual, I just spoke with him. We respectfully urge the commission to appoint Mr. Jim Fox, and please also pass short-term rental resolution like other counties have done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And last but not least, Jim Fox.
Thank you for your time. Jim Fox, Abilene Trail Bandridge. We've talked, we've heard a lot legally about traditions, and traditions are a very good thing. And, you know, that kind of sets the place, you know, and for everything we do. You know, in football, they have a ball walk, and they have running through the tee. Halloween, you have ghosts and scary movies and dah 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 dah. Thanksgiving, dinner with grandma and the family. Christmas, obviously, Santa Claus and the presents. Traditions are everywhere. Even county commission has traditions. You know, the pledge allegiance, the prayer, the honoring our heroes. Those are great traditions. But, you know, one of the traditions that should trump every tradition, and should be a tradition that's in everybody's mind, is the tradition of doing and voting what is best for the county above all else. And so, and not just following the recommendations of a single person. Traditions are great till they negatively affect our lives or how we operate as a community. Filling this vacancy should be like filling a job in the workplace. You should be doing interviews, resumes, check the work history. You know, compare work records of the two vying for the positions, attendance, involvement, attitude, ethics, vision. And I think if you do that, the choices will be clear. You know, I believe that, you know, first responders, police, doctors, nurses, teachers, clergy, as well as any elected official, should be held to a higher standard. Now, we know we don't make that all the time, but we should strive to achieve that. This includes integrity, morals, character, values, because they are entrusted leaders and protectors of our communities in the case of their lives. And I believe also in doing what is right. And if you see something, say something. So, I believe, you know, and then secondly, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the grinder. At the first demonstration of the grinder, there was one person showed up from District Eight to represent District Eight. That was myself. Nobody else. No commissioners, nobody vying for commissioning for citizens. I was the only one that came. Another thing to consider is, you know, I hear a lot, you know, about Terry. I love Terry to death. He's a great person. But he wasn't nominated. It was just myself and Mr. Henry. And so, to say, well, I'm nominating or I'm voting for Terry Dockery, doesn't exist because he wasn't even nominated. And you should be looking for somebody that has a vision for moving the county. And I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And last but not least, residents and citizens, make sure you put your votes through the votes and bonds. I don't believe we have any. We have no additions. You have only what you have, just your package. Hang on just a second here, let's get the computer ready. Thank you, sir. 90 zero, votes passed. Next, we have a nominated committee, Sammy Sullivan, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we met tonight, and we have a board, I'm sorry. We have a board of health, Regina Fields from October 2025 to October 29, a conservation board, Randy Bells from October 25 to October 23, and Bubba Pass.
Question or comment? Don't hear any, we'll proceed to vote. 90 zero, passes. Next, we have reports from elected officials and department heads. County Mayor, Mr. Mark Bush.
Yep, Rick. For Rick.
Yep, for Tom. You got an EMS board, ethics committee, healthcare foundation, regional planning, and sanitation commission.
Can we take them all at once?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
We're all ready there.
Got it.
We have 19 U.S. revenue passes. I believe we're up to chairman's comments, and I've relinquished my time for Mr. David Seale to address what's going on with the state of Tennessee.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time consideration on the agenda. Unofficially, I've already been working on the real estate transfer tax bill. 2026, when the session starts, I've been in contact with the House sponsor, Mr. Pat Morris, and the legislative staff in the Senate sponsor's office. If we can persuade the legislature to return 50% of the real estate transfer tax to county governments where it's collected, Jefferson County could realize nearly a million dollars of additional revenue to be used for the following budget items. And some of you have called and asked, what can we use this for if we get it? So here you go. We can use it on infrastructure, roads, bridges, schools, and other facilities, so any infrastructure. We can use it to pay our debt service for capital projects, and all those are capital projects related to schools right now. We can use matching funds for federal projects. Could you imagine how much that would help with ADA compliance and then other non-recurring expenses? So we have those four items. The revenue derived from this effort will not impact your maintenance of effort. That's because it's a state tax, not a local one. Contrary to rumors in the community, we're not creating a new tax. We're merely changing the distribution of proceeds of a tax that has already existed for decades. I've heard some of the stupidest comments in the community about this, with people thinking it's something that it's not. If you have any question about it, I'll be happy to address that if you call me, everyone who's got my number. This effort could be made easier by persuading the Tennessee State Funding Board to support the legislation by including it in the new state budget. That is extremely important. And I'm going to provide you all with a list of the five members of the State Funding Board. So you have an assignment, you have a role to play in this. Contact these State Funding Board members, and tell them, as a county commissioner, how important it is for this nominee to come back to the county governments. Real estate tax collections, state sales tax collections are expected to grow by $25 million in the 26, 27 fiscal year. That leaves a lot of room, even if it comes in an increment amount, say 10% the first year, 20% the second. I think there's enough growth in it to justify it in the budget. I want to talk to you just a minute about the progress and strategy. So far, seven Senate co-sponsors have signed on to it, and 26 House co-sponsors, in addition to the prime sponsors. And that's very significant because it sends a message that people in the communities where these representatives live are in favor of the transfer of the real estate transfer tax back to the county governments. We added another sponsor just a couple weeks ago in the Senate. Absent from co-sponsorship as of today is Representatives Faison and Farmer and Senator Seale. You all have sent them a resolution asking them to support this. I would ask you to call them. I'll call them and talk to them about it, but it would be nice if you all would call and just say, hey, sign on to this bill, and I'm sending you the bill number. You don't have to remember it. My goal is to add co-sponsors in each chamber and emphasize to the finance committee members. I'm planning to work with lobbyists from other county governments. I'm planning to work with grassroots organizations across the state. There's probably 20 of them that's going to help us with this. And then other special interest lobbyists that I work with. I'm also covering the issue tomorrow in the Tennessee conservative news, and I'm trying to persuade other counties to join our effort. If we have other counties across the state join us on this, it's going to make it a lot easier, too. Then finally, the tax relief program for veterans. It's House Bill 765 and Senate Bill 775. By Representative Wright, he's got a bill up that would take proceeds from the delinquent tax sales and apply 10% of it to bolster the Veterans Tax Relief Program. And I'm hoping to work with him on, I know Representative Wright spoke to him about two weeks ago about this. You're also going to get a link on it so you can see the actual text of the bill. Other bills may be filed to restore the Veterans Tax Relief Fund. It also applies to senior citizens and low-income people in our community. Since you made a resolution to support that restoration of the Veterans Tax Relief Fund, I would like to have your blessing to work on this issue as well. This would fit the current lobby contract under other county interest. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question or comment for Mr. Seales? Don't hear any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure. Hang on.
We don't have to make a motion to do that because it's already in his contract as other.
Sure.
So was that a blessing?
It was good.
All right. Thanks.
Going to be a short 10-minute recess restroom break, and then we're going to finish this meeting.[1363.15] I call this meeting back to order. Would everyone please sit down? Next, we have Budget Committee. Mr. Tom Seales.
All righty. I'll let Jesse go because we approved everything on the county end. Do you have any questions? Oh, Marcus, were you getting here, man?
It's a first. We approved everything, and if you have any questions for... We didn't approve everything?
Item number five.
I can't reme... Oh, yeah, we removed that. Yeah. I'm sorry. That's why I called on Jesse. My memory's not... How do you want to take these? You want to take them all at once for the county side?
I would think so. Yes, sir.
I think there's one. Is it number two? Both of them are using fund balance. We'll take them away at a time, then. Take them separate. They don't need a motion, Mr. Chairman. No. No.
Mr. Chairman, can I come and ask you something?
Sure. Here. No, it's on there.
So this... Are we minus number five on this one?
Item number five has been removed.
Minus number five.
Go back to the ceiling. That one. Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'd clear this up with a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
I move that we approve Fund 101, Budget Amendment Number Seven, Items One through Four, and Items Six through Seventeen.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. We have 18 yes, zero no's. It passes. Next.
Yeah, they kept... Yeah, go ahead. Ain't got no paperwork with you.
I believe it's Fund 171, Items One and Two. Number one.
Third, item one and two, using reserves of $37,500.
And they were both passed. Proceed to vote. 19 yes, zero no's. Passes.
The next one's Board of Education, year off on 141, Amendment Number Four, using fund balance $391,373, plus item number four on that.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. We'll proceed to vote. 19 zero. Passes. Yes, ma'am.
141, Budget Amendment Number Five, no use of fund balance or reserves, just moving funds around with additional revenue.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. We'll proceed to vote. 19 yes, zero no's. Passed.
Federal Fund 142, Amendment Number Two, three items.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. 19 yes, zero no's. Passed.
Paying capital, Board of Education capital, Fund 177, adding to reserves of $254,043.98. And then Items Number Four is transferring that fund that we approved, use of fund balance, in 141, transferring it in.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Passes 19 zero. Next on the agenda, we have a proposal to purchase a landfill shredder. I believe that the department head would like to address it. If that's okay with you, Jesse.
I'm with it.
Take the microphone, Mr. Eric Lards.
I do want to thank each and every one of the county commissioners that did come out to see this shredder, to see it operate. We were lucky enough to have two show up from each company, Robbland Shredded. We used it with the... What we done, we took two 30-yard pans and two 35-ton off-road trucks. We filled them up, each one. Done the same for both. I can guarantee you a 75% reduction in space with either shredder. That's after they're being shredded and being compacted. The only thing that we won't shred, and after I've talked to TDEC, I understand why they request this, is our cap layer and our side layer when we get to that. They don't... They prefer it not be shredded. They can't... They don't say that we can't. The reason being is they want it to be like an upside-down bird's nest. And you know how intertwined a bird's nest is. That's what they want, that top cap. But all the fluff that goes in the center, I can prove, will guarantee you 75%. That's how much we're going to reduce it. After it's been shredded and compacted. So we're saving Class III. We're going to gain another 20 to 30 years, hopefully. What you see back there now is 20 years' worth of C and D. And that's all we're talking about, C and D. We're not talking about MSWs. So I appreciate the Budget Committee, what they've done for us, that. And I would appreciate this whole board, and I appreciate the citizens that have spoke. You know, that... I think that says a lot to you, and the citizens are given a good input in what they want. You know, the sanitation department, we're trashy. We're going to get trashier every day. It ain't going away. We've got to... We've got to make space. And I know you wouldn't think that in the landfill, when you start talking about it, land is our biggest thing. Well, no, it's not. When it comes down to it, air is our biggest thing. Our airspace means more because we're digging down to go up. So this is really going to help. And I appreciate, you know, if this body supports it, approves it, we move forward. We've got to make things better. That's my whole goal, is just to make things better for everybody sitting in this room and everybody that's at home. So I would appreciate everything. And I've got two other small things right here. This was brought to me... One was brought to me today. The mayor should have got a copy of this, too. It's from the state of Tennessee. From TDEC, it has nothing to do with our permit. I always talk to stand right here and tell you now that that permit's ready to go, but it's not. So this is from the TDEC, or Division of Solid Waste Management. Please to inform Jefferson County Municipal Solid Waste Region has achieved a 25% reduction in diversion of gold presented in Tennessee code. That's for all of our MSW that has come in, what we've been able to recycle and resell and take out of our landfill. Overall, we have a rating of 43%, which is outstanding in the state of Tennessee, showing that we're being able to reduce our landfill space. The ton of compactor that this body proceeded to buy 10 years ago, I believe it is, that just goes to show you that that compactor's doing its job. It's been well worth its million dollars. Also, I want to thank all the citizens of Harrison County. Last quarter, I brought to you the American thrift store. I don't know... Some of these may not have been here, you know. They take any clothing, you've seen those little wood boxes? They're all about the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Any clothing that goes in that does not go in our landfill. And whatever they sell, you know, they're multi-million dollar agency, whatever, I don't care, as long as they're helping those kids that need help. This saves us space. For July, August, and September, using those boxes throughout the county, they're at all of our convenience centers, they're in Food City, I think they're in Walmart parking lots and everything, we diverted another $50,787 pounds of clothing that does not go in our landfill.
Does anyone else have a question or comment for Mr. Lards? We have a motion on the floor. Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the floor. Sir, speak your motion.
Hold on here just a minute. Let Jesse explain the finance, but not you, Eric, coming up. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion for Budget Committee recommendation is to split the cost. General Fund 101 will give $387,669. That's give. They won't be paying that back. And then the other half, we will do an inter-fund loan between Net Service and Landfield Fund 207. Their current inter-fund loan will be paid off in June of 2026. So honestly, the payments will stay around the same. Their budget will stay the same for the next three years, and they will pay that off in three years. If that is approved with your all's motion, I do have to present a resolution next month for an inter-fund loan. So you would see that. But we could go ahead and move the funds from General Fund 101 over to 207.
Okay. Hold right there now. What is your motion, Mr. Bales?
Do exactly what she said to. We all said it that way.
Boy, you're chicken down on them.
So we are accepting the Budget Committee's recommendation.
Yes, that's what it is.
And your second is good with that? So Jesse, we will be concluding this if this passes next month.
So I could go ahead and...
So everybody understands how an inter-fund works.
Correct. So if this is approved by County Commission tonight, I could go ahead and move the General Fund 101 fund over, which is half of the amount. And then next month, I would need the approval from this body for the inter-fund loan. And then I would submit it to local government finance the very next day, and hopefully by the end of the week, they would have that approved.
Doing that would also allow them to... By their stead air, to go ahead and start using that. If they know they've got their money coming and the other chicken's in the mouth, that would allow them to go ahead and move forward.
My understanding is we could probably get them half the money by Friday or next Monday or so.
If it's approved.
Question or comment?
Yeah. Please clarify the motion. Read that once before we go.
Okay. Motion is as written. Jesse, do you have the paper?
I don't have anything written, but I just wrote it down as he said it. So General Fund 101, unassigned fund balance...
A regular fund balance.
Would pay for half of it. That money would not come back to General Fund. It goes to 207. They would pay for half. The landfill 207 would come before you all for an inter-fund loan next month for approval for the other half of that portion. Now, they would pay interest over the three years, but they would pay half of that portion plus interest.
Just read the motion, please.
Okay. The motion is going to read that the money will come from our fund balance to the tune of 387, 669 even. Then there will be an under... An inter-fund loan for the exact same amount that we will have to prove next month for the other half of the money. So Eric will be getting the money instantly. That's what the motion's going to say.
He'll get half of it.
Half, and then the other half next month.
After local government finance approves your resolution.
So that'll give us time for him to wish out. So that's what the motion's going to say.
Needs to say to purchase a shredder, right? Part of that needs to say to purchase a shredder.
Yes. Thank you. Sure.
I got my request to speak. I would like to... Thank you, Eric.
I'm working. I'd like to thank you for the time that three of us went out and visited with you. But I want to clarify, is this going to slow us down getting that in? This shredder?
The way this is being done, is it going to slow us down getting shredded? That big green shredder is sitting at the landfill right now, and that is what we will start with.
So how soon can we stop that $30,000 a month bleeding?
I wish I could tell you I could stop it all this week, but I can't because... Simply because we're still waiting on the permit from TDEC. We'll wait... LDA has to return that, and this is what takes so long. When that permit's in the state's hand, the clock runs. We've got about 145 days on that. This has now went... This went from a five-year to eight-year. We're now a 10-year project. And that's not just with us. The state says anybody re-permitting or having to permit anything should have started 10 years in advance. Now, next year, that may change. But with this, we can pay... If we've not come up, I can pull out and we can create our space.
We can do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Question or comment? Would proceed to vote. We have 19 yes and zero no's. Third year of just Bob shredder.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate you very much.
Now we're down to business. The Resolution 2025-06, a resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee to establish regulations for licensing short-term rental units within Jefferson County. We have a motion on the floor, but Katie Huffaker, say could do by Marcus Reed. Question or comment? Ms. James?
After we got this last markup by the attorney, I feel a lot better about the way it was. Grandfathered is truly grandfathered now. There's going to be a lot less that they have to do, and I feel really good about that. I still think it's very cumbersome still for people who are trying to start an Airbnb. I wish that could be reduced more. I'm not against this. I do want this. But I am still concerned that there are going to be at least two, if not three, positions that are going to be created by this, and the expenses that's going to come with it, I think, are going to go in the hole. So we need to take into account the fact that we already can't pay for what we've got with the revenue that we have, and I don't see this bringing in enough revenue to cover what we're trying to do. Through talking to Pigeon Forge and Gatlinburg, that's some of the people that we've looked at in copying theirs, they still don't have theirs enacted because they can't get it right. So we're not following suit with other people. Theirs are not enacted yet either. So as we've heard, it's not... It's not been proven by any county to be in working order yet. So I feel like it still has some work. And that's not what a lot of people want to hear, but I'm concerned it still needs some work.
Not seeing any more requests to speak. We will proceed to vote.
Katie's...
Katie, would you have a request to speak?
I did.
Okay.
All right.
I wouldn't see it.
So I'd just like to say financially, I don't think it's going to be cumbersome on the county. I don't think they're going to lose money. The inspections will be the responsibility of the owner. So if that's the concern of the cost, that won't be there. For the permitting, essentially, the goal is to break even. You're not making a bunch of money off the permitting. That's not what this is set up to do. This resolution's set up to ensure safety and that for the grandfather, just they provide basic things. The Public Service Committee has worked on this in depth. It's been to our lawyer, back and forth, as well as CTS. In my opinion, it wouldn't be before us if it wasn't a good finalized document from our lawyer. So I'm in full support of this, and I hope you all will support it, too.
Request to speak. I see zero at the top, so we'll proceed to vote. If you approve this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. We have sixteen yeses, three noes. It passes. Next, we have new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If you'd allow me, I'd like to group the surplus resolutions together.
We got to do two more resolutions before we get to do that there, sir. And I'd be glad to take that motion.
I thought you would, sir.
In new business, we have Resolution 2025-50 from the public hearing. That is the first one. That would be on 139. My understanding is this did not pass on. Stephanie, would you like to speak to that?
When this zoning issue came up in front of our planning commission last month, our planning commission unanimously denied it. So we, I went to the property owner, and he still wanted to go forward. So that's why I'm here tonight. Normally, you know, normally someone would call it if the county planning commission was against it.
Anybody have a question or comment from Miss Stephanie? Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Brooks, seconded by Randy Bales. Mr. Brooks, state your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny this resolution.
Randy, is that your second?
Absolutely.
Question or comment for the denial? The motion is to deny, so you will vote yes to deny, no to not. Nineteen yeses. They got to remind you, you're in the court, Randy.
Sorry.
Can't do that, but sorry. Next, we have Resolution 2025-51 at the end of Rockham Road in Jefferson City. My understanding is Jefferson City approved this, Stephanie?
Yes, that's correct.
Question or comment? No zero requests to speak, so we will vote straight up. Yes to approve, no to deny. Nineteen yeses, zero noes. Mr. Brooks, you got something for me?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following resolutions in a group, if the commission pleases. Resolution 2025-52. Resolution 2025-54. Resolution 2025-55. Resolution 2025-56. Resolution 2025-57. Resolution 2025-58. Resolution 2025-60. And Resolution 2025-61. Move those all together.
Question or comment?
Take my name. I'll find it. Sorry.
We have nineteen yeses and zero noes. They all pass. Announcements? Does anybody have an announcement?
Mr. Chairman, we still need to do Resolution 2025-53.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that you moved that.
Item B under new business.
We have motion on the floor in a second. Is there a question or comment? I see no requests to speak. Proceed to vote. Nineteen, zero? Start date?
Commissioner Huffaker.
Commissioner Huffaker.
There's a start date in '06 in the finalized version. The last version I saw was one still.
Question, '06? In the last version I read, it had a start date. I'm just wondering when we start in Washington.
The one I printed today says this is the blank day of...
Blank 2025.
Oops. That rebusied.
The Public Service Committee talked about the start date. At the, I think that, when it was started for that.
Are you talking about how long the grandfather has applied that six months? But they're talking about the front page of the resolution?
I think Frank had made a recommendation as to when that would be. Did you have how many months?
I have a recommendation from Frank as to how long it's going to take you to get started. So the beginning of the next month. What do you ask for?
Oh, duh, we all talking at the same time.
I remember what we talked about on grandfather, but I don't remember what we talked about on your start.
Okay, if it's like any other thing, it's effective right now. If it didn't have a date, we pass it. Unless we rebusied it and moved it. Oh, duh. Mr. Bales?
When would you like to start it? Because it's your office that's dealing with it. And I know it takes time to set that up. So my question would be, when would you feel comfortable starting it? Because I know you got to get some stuff in place. We talked about it on the Public Service when we were doing it, and we had a timeframe. So I'm just going to ask you, what's your timeframe? Approximately?
Yeah. Everybody that applies between now and what date we set would then be grandfathered, right?
That would be correct?
Before passage.
Before passage?
Correct.
So they would not be grandfathered?
Open to application date.
I've got a lot of preliminary stuff done, but it's going to take just a little while to get things implemented and everybody on board in my office with the updated processes. So I have to go through the first of November.
Mr. Williams, you in place, sir?
Yeah.
Will we have to re...
Like so.
I would like, sir.
To clarify that as a clear clair as well, since it didn't have a... It hasn't, the blanks were left because obviously, it's up to you guys when you start the resolution. But at the same time, there was clearly a blank there. You could say it's a scrivener's error or a clear clair and reconsider that.
Okay, we'll have to reconsider. We'll have to vote to rescind and then reconsider?
I don't believe you have to rescind.
It should be, rescind would be to...
Well, you're going into the original motion, but just as a date, if everybody's good with the date, you can pass that on a single vote.
You could consider it a scrivener's error since it was just a date. Clearly, the blanks are in there.
Yeah, it has to have a start date. There's not a start date. So I don't see that there's an issue. I defer to your parliamentarian with respect to whether or not you... You could just consider that a clear clair or scrivener's error and just add the date and vote on that particular date.
I think we're doing with that.
Just vote on the particular date. We have fixing to vote on November the first being the starting date on the short-term rental. Let us catch up here for just a second. Got a motion on the floor in a second. Proceed to vote.
Jimmy, I hit the request to speak button.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is November the first reasonable? We're a couple weeks away.
I've already got the application, draft application done. Draft permit's done. I think we can, you know, we can throw it into implementation.
That's what Frank recommended I start down.
You ready, Mr. Parliamentarian?
Tomorrow would be too soon. Next week I can work with.
What we voted on was announced. We'll proceed to vote. We have eighteen yeses, one no. Is there any announcements? Mr. Brooks?
Need to allow our VSO, she's been waiting to speak. She has a year-end report card.
Sure, she's got an announcement. Let her do it.
Not really an announcement, but a year ago tomorrow, I was voted in by the commission. And I want to get you guys up to date on what's going on in the county. Most of your county VSOs only bring in about two million dollars a month per year. If you look at your first paper I gave you, that big number at the bottom, that four million dollars is what I brought in monthly over the past year, working here. This is a report card from the state. If you look again at the bottom there, county ranked by benefits, we're twenty-seven. Last year, we were fifty-two. So just to kind of show you the economic impact of the work that I do in this county, I'm seeing on average twenty-nine people per day. That's a lot of people. Poor Frank, I'm always stealing his chairs out of county clerk office so my veterans can sit down and wait on me. So this quarter, we had forty-eight veterans come back a hundred percent. We have ninety-five homebound veterans. I lost two last week. We did have ninety-seven. And with the government shutdown, you're probably going to get some calls, okay? HUD-VAS, which is the homeless veterans program, is shut down right now. They are not giving out vouchers. We have veterans in the county who are losing their housing, okay? Because they're not getting those vouchers to pay for their housing. The Jefferson County Community Center has so graciously let those homeless veterans who are getting kicked out come shower down there for free. All they have to do is identify themselves as a veteran. And Kevin, he's been wonderful. He's going to let them shower for free down there until we can get them established in housing. I have about sixteen right now. That's not normal. I normally have about four floating around the county. But again, we had a lot of DIC granted, and this is quarterly. Yearly are those two sheets I gave you. You're more than welcome to look them over. And if you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Question or comment? Not hearing any? Thank you. Last but not least, we're going to have one more vote. We have Mr. Henry and Mr. Fox. The roll will be called one more time. When you're ready, sir.
Katie Huffaker.
Henry.
Janet Norton.
Fox.
Joe Coleman. Jimmy Del Patterson. Austin Brooks. Jim Snodgrass.
Fox.
Greg Bird.
Henry.
John Johnson.
Henry.
Tim Seals.
Henry.
Sammy Solomon.
Henry.
Rob Levens.
Fox.
Ransom Douglas.
Fox.
Randy Bales.
Henry.
Aaron Loy.
Henry.
Ronnie Coleman.
Henry.
Jimmy Carmichael.
Henry.
A.J. Walker.
Henry.
Marcus Reed.
Fox.
Heidi Thomas.
Fox.
The official tally is eleven for W.D. Henry, seven for Jim Fox. Mr. Henry, you will need to come to the podium, sir.
You will raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I'll perform with fidelity the duties of the office which I have been appointed and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee and the United States and to...
Can I come on that little clock, Terry will hear you.
Sorry. I do solemnly swear to support that I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office which I have been appointed and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee and the United States and to faithfully perform the duties of the office of County Commissioner representing the eighth district of Jefferson County, Tennessee.
Now, that's a lot to remember out there. I solemnly swear four miles to... Oh, I do, okay. I was going to say, man.
Yeah.
If you remember, you can take a seat. Anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Mr. Parliamentarian, do you have anything? Well, good then. Motion to adjourn?